All right, thank you. So, please forgive us, we've had some technical difficulty that we, we hope we have resolved now. So, we skipped over voting to approve the checklist of bills. Because people couldn't hear to comment. So, we had a motion and a second. So, is there any comment? There was none in the room, or any comment on Zoom on the checklist of bills?
We do not have anyone sign up to make a vote.
Okay, great, all right. All those in favor of accepting the checklist, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Schwager, who was with us, it has joined us back by Zoom. We will let you know when that occurs. Now, we were down, oh, sorry, public comment on any other items?
Yeah, if there's any.
You might.
Number nine, is there any public comment on the Administration Finance Committee items? Or online? Any none in the room? Trish, is there anyone online? No? Okay.
All right, Planning and Zoning Committee. Is there any zoning reported off? Are the zoning person out of the room? Do we have any, is there anything you want to present for the zoning report?
I know, we did not have a planning commission meeting this month, so the annual report was the summary of all the activity.
I'd like to thank the Planning Committee, Plan Commission, excuse me, for all the hard work this year. You could look at that activity report and see that it was a hard working year. Zoning hearing, Bert?
Zoning, the minutes from the November meeting are in your packet. The December meeting was held last Wednesday, but the meetings, the minutes are not available at this time and will be into your folder as soon as available.
Anything else? Any public comments on anything in zoning, anyone who's present? All right, hearing none, if, do we have anyone on Zoom that has comments?
No. And they can hear us, I can confirm.
Awesome, amazing, good job, good job by everybody who tackled that. Reports of the Recreation Committee?
Thank you, just first, I'd like to just say what an awesome event was held here at Town Hall last Saturday evening with Winterfest. And it was a lot of hard work from Bob, Tricia, Sandra, John, and our Public Works Department. We had the weather forecast looking very unpromising. And they still pulled it off and had a great event from everyone I spoke with. The really enjoyed the event and are looking forward to next year. And so, I guess, just moving right on to the Activities Advisory Committee. We did have some of our members participate in that event on Saturday. And, and your, the minutes for the meeting are in your packet. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions? Moving on to Councilwoman Smith with the Finance Development Promotional Committee for the Heritage Center. I do want to add, the Heritage Center had a really nice program for the children on Saturday night as well.
And, yeah, they participated in the Winterfest, but there was no other meeting, so, you know, the up-to-date notes were at our last meeting. But if anybody has any questions?
There's no questions. Moving on to Community Day Subcommittee, there was no meeting of that committee. And finally, if there are any public comments on anything happening with recreation from anyone in the room? Or online?
I'd like to make a comment. First off, I'm not going to try to thank everybody for the event, but I wanted to add you, Councilmember Clunin, to that list because you were a part of all of that. And I just wanted to say that I loved the event. I thought it was great. Congratulations to everyone who put it together, everything that went into that. It was a really cool event. And my son, my older son and I watched the fireworks. We've never had such a cool view and experience of a fireworks show. That was, like, we could see where they were launched from and they're only about 50 feet off the ground. It was just, it was very cool.
And he seemed to enjoy that ice hockey guy thing.
Yeah. Yeah, he enjoyed that guy a little more than he probably should have. He took like 20 shots at that thing. But it really was, that was a really, really cool event. I, so hats off to everyone.
Did he ever really score?
Eventually, he did, but I think he had to cheat. This will be on recording for him to look back on.
Yeah.
Why do you think I asked?
And if there are no further comments, that concludes our Recreation Committee report.
Town Manager's Report?
I'll have a copy of the report. Nothing that I really wanted to bring to your attention, but if you have questions, feel free.
I have a question, you know, noting the tennis court grant that we'll be working on here in Devlin Park. The one thing I saw that would have been really nice on Saturday evening is a paved walkway from the ramp to Devlin Park. I'm curious if some of that grant funding could be used or that, something, they were just trying to brainstorm an idea to get something in there, if that, if there'll be any extras.
Really couldn't be used for the grant, but we've put that on our work list for this spring.
Good, okay, because it's a small.
Extend both ends of that.
Great, because I think we've talked about, and I know the Activity Advisory Committee is hoping to bring more action to Town Hall. And so, that would really help, and that.
Would help a lot.
Thank you.
Also, the cable channels up and running, so if you have some suggestions for some content that would be, you think would be appropriate there? Or some things that we can kind of slide over, please? John Burdaski will probably be the person to talk to about that. Anything else on Town Manager's Report? Town Attorney's Report?
Nothing to report publicly. My report was part of the packet. Always happy to answer any questions. If anybody should have them individually or something we need to discuss, we can have an executive session. Thank you, President.
All right, thank you. Is there any old business? All right, hearing none, moving to new business. This is annually, this is the firefighters' credit that the town gives an appreciation to our volunteer firefighters in our companies. And every year, we have to re-approve this, as well as the list of the individuals that qualify for it. The police chiefs have the criteria and they submit those lists to us. That was all in your information. Did I miss anything on that?
No.
Okay. All right, is there a motion for some information? Councilor Stoneholt?
Motion to adopt tentatively identified Resolution Number 26 of 2021, approving the eligibility of certified members of the volunteer fire companies serving the town to receive an earned income tax credit not to exceed $500 or real estate tax credit not to exceed $300 for the 2022 tax year.
Is there a second? Carol? Are there any comments or questions from council? All right, hearing none, are there any comments for anyone present? Anyone on Zoom? All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the floor is. RJ, do you need to summarize this, or do you, or do you think?
If anyone has any questions about the reason.
Okay, all right, well, I'm just going to open the floor then for nominations. I mean, not for nomination, excuse me, for a motion then. The floor is open for 8B motion, is there a motion?
President?
Yes.
I'll move to deny the tentatively identified ordinance number 1521 to rezone 10185 dash, or 10185210201 Perry Highway from R2 to C7.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions from council?
For me, the reason why I'm moving to deny is, you know, and I've said it before, I'm, 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 I mean libertarian, but once there's a zoning plan in place, people are entitled to rely on that. And we had the resident from the next door property come and express concerns. And, you know, so this doesn't meet the high bar that I set for rezoning a property. And then on top of that, going to C7, that means in the future, that can become an office building or various other uses, not just a parking lot. And so, that's my reason why I made a motion to deny the, the ordinance, adoption of the ordinance.
Okay. Are there any other comments from council? Yes?
Can I ask a question of council? Like, or I guess of our expert Realtor? Like, with those three homes, do you see them being sold one, one day?
Actually.
Or are we just going to be creating, like, three houses that won't sell?
Well, they're, right now, they're priced, the home, two, right across the street, I think it was. Yeah. 10179 Perry Highway just sold in August for $208,000 with two days on the market for a single-family home. That was almost across the street. As of last week, 10121 Perry High was, was still active at 177, but, so, and, and I noted, there is already commercial property within about a block of this property across the street at 10185 to 10201 Perry Highway. And, oh, that's when we're talking about, the, it's 10384. Perry is slightly smaller acreage, but they are asking 975, and that is available for sale at this time. So, there are opportunities for, if somebody did want to purchase commercial property, that's already commercial property right in that stretch of Perry Highway. And I, I see those three properties, if they were sold as res, they were never listed as residential ever by the Realtor. They've only been listed in the MLS's. So, that's something to consider, too. They haven't tried to list them as residential on the MLS.
Your opinion is there is a market for it at the right time?
I, I think it's, from what I understand, I've not seen the property, so I can't say, I have not seen the interior. So, I have looked through the MLS. So, there's work to be done, but there's definitely potential for residential sale based on what the neighbors, who theirs.
That was my concern, is are we going to agree if they stay, or is it going to create a void condition?
The other one sold in two days.
All right, anything else?
Just, since I seconded the denial motion. I think that my, my personal objection is kind of bolstered by what Councilmember Clunin said, is that this is a preemptive rezoning, in my opinion. This, these are, these are residential properties that those residents want to preemptively rezone to a commercial state so that they can get more money for their property. I would have felt much more interested, as a council member, in having someone come to council who was actually the buyer, who was someone who had the properties under contract with, presumably with a contingency of rezoning to state their case and tell us exactly what they were going to do with it, not prospectively what could be done with it. So, those are my reasons.
Any other comments by councilmembers? Any other, any comments from anyone who's present? If you're, if you have a comment, please come to the microphone, say your name and your address. That's why we can hear in the recording.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Tim Fitzgerald, the agent for 10185 to 10201. The issue with the condition of, of the houses is they're extremely bad shape. So, this way, we're not sold, it would probably cost between 75,000 to $125,000 per house to recondition them into what that place just sold for 208. Because I was, looked at that place, very familiar with it, and the condition of these three little houses, they just don't have the money to do it. So, if they could sell them as is, eventually, some, the people we've had look at them, they, it's just a slow, it's a very low amount, and it's not, it's not going to pass. I mean, they still have a mortgage on the place. So, just want to throw that out there, that's the reason why they were hoping to redo it. It's just not, the amount of money you got to put into them, it's very.
Any other questions? If I could ask, what led to these places being in the condition that they are now?
Matriarch of the family, she passed, she was really the driving force behind everything. She passed several years ago. And after that, things kind of just started, they just didn't have the money to keep things up. Mr. Pringle is up in age, he's able to maybe run a tractor, but he's not able to keep stuff up. They just didn't have the finances to keep the houses up. In couple, they just didn't have the money to keep things moving. So, they've, they've come, they have fallen apart, say, let's say the words. So, they're not in, in, in good shape, and that's what they were hoping for. That's obviously the place next door, Schultz was the, an ideal place for them to expand. That was the thought process. Plus, as we brought up before, there, there's other places across the street at C7.
No, thank you, I, I understand that, but, I mean, I think, it's not, this has always been residential. It's, to me, it would be a windfall to, to rezone this into commercial, you know, at the expense of the residential neighbors. And so, you know, all, all apologies to the situation, but balancing things, I, I think it's more fair to the neighbors to keep it R2 than it would be, I think it's more fair to everybody overall to keep it R2 than to rezone it. Thank you.
Even the fact that the, the sight, line of sight on Longview, that's, that's a big issue, getting that fixed.
Yeah, like I said, it, it's a high bar for me to rezone a property. And, and neglect by the current owners or their predecessors does not reach that far for me.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments of anyone present? Any comments of anyone on Zoom?
We have one of those, Mr. Jeff Casey, I'm going to send him a mic and camera.
Okay, presume this is working?
We can hear you, we can hear us still.
Great, thanks. I think it's a big concern that the township shouldn't rezone simply to make it more profitable for the seller. The real estate agent has not disclosed a potential buyer. So, if it's not Schultz, then who might it be? Any other buyer would need to exit onto Route 19 from the curb, the curb, current curb cuts. And that's something the Planning Commission had wanted to eliminate. However, at the last meeting, Mr. Fitzgerald mentioned that they could actually use those curb cuts if the property isn't sold to Schultz. So, if they don't use the curb cuts, then they would have to exit onto a residential neighborhood road, which is Longview, which then means that if it's a car carrier, the car carrier, a car carrier would need to pull out onto Route 19. And I can't even imagine the, the disaster that might create. Or it would have to go down through the Oak Ridge Plan, and that, in essence, would be another problem. He also makes some other suggestions that he wants to create a line of sight. Well, if you happen to go up and look at the property, there are stakes in the property. It shows where it was surveyed and shows where the property line is. The piece of property that he says he could cut back for line of sight is actually owned by the state of Pennsylvania and not by Mr. Pringle. So, we have to keep in mind, this is a salesman simply doing his job. He's pitching his best to win the game. And it would be, I think, a, a very poor decision to rezone it because you could actually make it even harder to resell as a, as a, as a commercial seven property. It might be more difficult to sell at a higher price because it's, we'd have to sell at a higher price, plus they would have to go through demolition. So, if somebody wants to buy the property and put the three together and put in a duplex or a triplex, I think that would be much more financially feasible than to rezone it to C7 and then look for a buyer. That's my opinion, and I appreciate your time. Thank you, David, for sticking up for the, the neighbors. When they did buy the property, they were not considering this ever being rezoned as commercial. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else on Zoom that has a comment?
I don't have anyone else that had signed up.
All right, there has been a motion and a second. All those in favor of denying the rezoning, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion is denied. Um, we are in good fortune because of horrible fortune to be able to participate in a settlement that is associated with the pharmaceutical addiction abatement trust, the opioid misuse. So, for us to apply for some of those monies, we have to adopt this resolution. So, that's what this is about, anything else on that?
Just, for one of the communities in Pennsylvania who would, that would be eligible to participate in the settlement, the monies that would come into the town would need to be used for drug enforcement and, and education purposes to try to fight the opioid issues in the area. We have registered so that people were aware that we're interested in the settlement. This is just a formal process allowing us to enter into an agreement with the pharmaceutical companies in order to participate in the settlement.
Okay, the floor is open for motion. All right, Councilmember Plonin?
To move to adopt tentatively identified Resolution Number 27 of 2021, authorizing appropriate town officials to enter into settlement agreements with McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, Inc., AmerisourceBergen Corporation, Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janson Pharmaceuticals, Inc., Ortho McNeil Janson Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and Janson Pharmaceuticals, Inc., and agree to the terms of the Pennsylvania Opioid Misuse and Addiction Abatement Trust.
Well done. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any comments or questions from council? Yes?
Obviously, for the public, how much is the dollar amount that we would receive, over what term?
We will be receiving approximately $78 per resident. And that term will be somewhat dependent, it will be over the next several years minimum. I'm sure that that, that some of that is still being worked out in terms of the, the final numbers and how the monies will actually be distributed. But that $78 per capita is a, is a good number.
A quarter million dollars.
Councilmember Smith?
And Bob also, you know, just kind of for the public's benefit, this is a settlement that's happening, whether we participate or not, for the most part, I mean.
Well, part of, part of the settlement is a requirement that everyone signs on to it. So, the Attorney General's Office is sort of pushing the, the idea of the settlement at this point. To me, it's, I think, for the town and the campus, it's a very beneficial because it brings money in for us to make use of and create programs that we otherwise would not have been able to do.
Yeah, and this isn't really something we'd be able to pursue ourselves realistically.
Not, not to the extent that we'll be able to with this.
Right, so this, this is really more just kind of getting the advantage of, of this that we wouldn't be able to do on our own.
Correct.
Signing on to class actions, too.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly.
Almost exactly like that.
Yes.
I, depending on how much this is, and I guess the listener's doing some math, pretty nice math over here, and what the restraints are on how to use this, I would like for council to consider using some of this money to hire either a social worker or an emergency interventionist or a mental health advocate to work in conjunction with our police department. So, this is just my recommendation, something I think would be a good use of some of this money. Any other comments from anyone in council? Any comments from anyone in the present? Yes?
Brian Sullivan, 997 Grand Drive, I just wanted to follow up on the suggestion to use money for mental health support for public safety. I think that's a fantastic idea.
Thank you. Anyone else has any comment that's present? Any Zoom comments?
Don't see any.
All right, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Is there a nomination from the nominating committee for the EAC?
Yes, there is, Madam President. I move to, the nominating committee, through me, moves to appoint Matthew Hartman to the Environmental Advisory Committee for a term ending August 31st, 2022.
All right, thank you. Are there any other nominations? All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Roffin? Are there any comments from anyone in council?
Again, it seemed like really outstanding candidates for this. I appreciate the other candidates.
Absolutely. Any comments from anyone present? All right, any Zoom comments? All right, all those in favor of the appointment of Matthew Hartman, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other new business? Yes?
How to start, but on our personnel board, we have been figuring for life, what better term about interviews and who to appoint and how to appoint. And we're always looking for good people to serve on boards. So, my thought was, why don't we make the board just slightly larger? There's three members now on the personnel board. Let's make it five. And then, there's just more room for more qualified candidates to be appointed. And thus, more people volunteer and do other things in our community. So, I don't know what the next step for that would be, if we could even do it.
The council does have the authority to enlarge this board. Some boards are dictated how big they can be and what the composition is. But this is one that actually we have a little bit of flexibility with. So, the, and, and call me out if I'm doing this wrong, but I believe that if council could give a head nod and then have our solicitor prepare what that ordinance would look like.
Yes.
And then, we still have to have, like, public, we still have to have a public meeting, and then we have to.
It'd be a Class A ordinance.
Class A ordinance.
Public hearing, et cetera.
Right, all right. So, we, it's still, it takes some time, but it, we've had plenty of time for discussion and pros and cons and those kinds of things. But what we would need is a head nod if we wanted the solicitor to move forward with that. Or if you're like, nah, I don't want to do it, then.
I'm not sure if I understand. Are you saying make the Personnel Committee larger?
Yeah.
Not this board larger?
No, the Personnel Committee, there's three current members.
Right.
We make it five. And it just will be able to volunteer, more experts to be on it.
So, I need to hear from you all, if you, if you're, if something you would be interested in looking at.
I think it's a fine idea. It just gets more diversity, more expertise, more opportunity for great volunteers.
Okay, all right. You already have your opinion, you think you're all right with this?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I think. Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I don't kind of want to get in the middle of the discussion of filling the seats, but I think that, I think that's a good idea to enlarge the board and have it five members. There, there seems to be a lot of interest in those positions.
Okay. Agree?
I agree.
Okay, all right.
I think as long as five's the limit, I would not want to go more than five.
I agree. You start getting too many people and then you, their decisions take forever to be made.
How many members of council?
Have you attended the last?
Where you been?
That's the.
Where you been? Yeah.
Yes, I think five would be.
Okay, all right. Mr. Solicitor?
I will prepare set ordinance.
All right, perfect. Any other new business? All right, is there? Okay. Okay, so we have non-agenda public comments now. Are there, okay? Say it again.
Sure, Brian Sullivan, ninety-nine hundred and seventy, Grand Drive. Around the personnel board discussion, I wanted to just encourage a decision made on the current opening before the end of this meeting, if that's still a possibility. There's a could change, I see if there's more people on the board looking forward, but right now there's three people each for a three-year term and each year a different person comes up. So the intent is that each council year, there's a decision by that council to, to fill a different vacancy. And if we don't decide tonight, it goes to the next council. And that would change the makeup and I think it's only fair to this, the people to make a decision on this vacancy. So you just have to make the decision tonight.
All right, if council wanted to do that, then they would have to, a council member would need to make a motion to remove it from the table.
True, but we would have to add that to the agenda first. So there would be, so the sunshine, new sunshine environment. The motion to add the most.
I see.
To that. Now, from the perspective of the, the personnel board, even if somebody's term expires at the end of the year, they continue to serve until they are replaced. So there would not be a deficiency in members of the board. It will continue in its current form unless council took action tonight or in the future.
So even though the term expires, then the alternate wouldn't step into that place?
They can continue to serve.
Oh, okay. 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 Does anybody want to do that? Does anyone want to make that motion?
Madam President, I'm not going to make the motion, but I did want to say, I, I actually was ready to move to untable that or remove that motion from the table, just because I think it's been long enough and, and we should kind of finish it. But between Councilmember Schweiger not being able to reconnect, I, I think it's important that she's part of it, and between Councilmember Charles' suggestion of expanding the board. You know, I've, I've kind of been swayed away from the, the urgency to, to remove that motion from the table. And I, I agree with Mr. Sullivan that I kind of entered tonight with the idea that it was important that this council fill that, that seat for the reasons that he said. But after hearing Mr. Carl, or Councilmember Carl's suggestion, I think that that I'm, I'm no longer going to make that, that move, whatever it would be, the motion to untable or the motion to make a motion, whatever, whatever our solicitor said.
Okay. All right, I'm hearing no motion to put this on the agenda. So that's it. Any other new business? Okay, before I call for a motion to adjourn, I have a little speech. We have had an unprecedented turnover on council over the past two years unrelated to that are related to changes in individuals' personal circumstances. We lost some good people, but we also gained some good people through the appointment process. This is the end of the terms for David Smith in Ward Three and Shelley Spohnholtz in Ward Two. Or, oh, sorry, four. Thanks. I would like to thank David for his time and service. Until you've done it, you have no idea how much work and time is involved in doing good local government. David has a rare gift of what I call three sixty perspective. He seems to be able to view a situation and see how all the individuals will be affected. He has offered consistent thoughtful opinions and ideas. I have a deep respect for David's willingness to truly listen and carefully evaluate differences of opinions and make a decision, sometimes even changing his original opinion based on what he's heard, which we just demonstrated.
That was not planned.
It was completely planned. David is tough but fair-minded. Thank you for stepping up when the community needed you. Councilmember Spohnholtz, your professional experience with law, planning, zoning, stormwater, and all manner of environmental topics has, in my opinion, made you the most informed and qualified person to ever sit on this council. You have a way of presenting an opinion with inclusion and respect that is an art form that we should all try to emulate. You've advocated and represented the citizens of Ward Two. Shelley, you have been an effective leader and liaison to your committees. While I am sorry that I could not talk you into running for your seat, and I tried, we are looking forward to your involvement in the planning commission. With great respect, I thank you, Shelley, for stepping up and serving this community.
President, can I quickly?
No, you will not quickly.
Quickly might be an exaggeration. Yeah, but I did, I wanted to thank everybody on council, you know, everybody who helps with council, including Solicitor, the town administration and staff, you know, from, from Bob and RJ and Sandy and just everybody that I've, I've had contact with, you know, Chief. I, I don't want to start naming all the names because I'll inevitably leave people out, but thank you to everybody, you know, everybody that I've worked with cares deeply about the town. I've learned so much more about how the town operates than I ever knew I didn't know before. And, and President Zachary, you're, you're right, it's, it's a lot more work than you think it is when you're going in, but it's very rewarding work. And, and President Zachary, I do want to thank you too. You as president do a lot more work than people realize. And you take a lot of flack that you shouldn't, but you do. And, you know, that's the role and we all understand that, but I, I can say I, for one, as both a member of council and as a resident of the town of McCandless, appreciate what you do, what you as council do, what Bob, you do, and what the town staff here does, what all the heads do, and the residents. I've seen way more interaction and involvement from the residents than, than I kind of expected, especially in this climate. You know, when I got appointed to the board, it was towards the beginning of COVID and we were completely remote. Then we went hybrid and we're still hybrid. But even through that, we had engaged citizens, people who cared enough to, to give input. I'm going to try to remain one of those citizens, one way or another, whether it's through boards or just coming to meetings or whatever the case is. It's kind of ignited an interest in community service or in inserting the community through, through this. And really, the, the, the respect that I have for the men and women on this council and at town is immense. What you all do, you are all so very thoughtful and you know, you have the interests of the town and we don't always agree on everything. But I think this council has worked together exceedingly well at, you know, times, at times agreeing to disagree. But we've never gotten, at least in, in what I've seen, we very rarely gotten to the point where it's, it's disrespectful. It's always, it's almost always been, you know, a, it can get heated at times. It was not as bad as I feared it could be. Let me put it this way. So thank you all for making this a real pleasure and honor to, to serve with you.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Spohnholtz?
I'm not even going to try to follow that one. However, what I'd like to say is personally, it has been an honor for me as well to serve the town, to work with this council, to work with the staff. And I will just reiterate everything that Councilmember Smith just recently said because I think was extremely well said and I feel the same way. So thank you. And Kim, I would also like to call you out because I know your job is thankless and I wouldn't do it in a million years, but you have absolutely stood, stood up and managed it beautifully, very presidentially and very competently. So thank you for your service too.
Thank you. I appreciate that a lot. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the last meeting of McCandless Town Council in twenty-twenty-one?
I'd love to make a motion to adjourn this meeting of twenty-twenty-one.
All right, Councilmember Ropa, is there a second? Okay, Councilmember Taral, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.